Hey y'all, it's your girl Queen and I'm here with an update to university. I'm so ashamed, I'm so ashamed. So basically you see he's alone, right? Yeah, every last one of his roommates flunked out. I had another video but I was whispering because my cat was asleep and I didn't wanna wake her up cuz she was on medication. But uh she's not on medication anymore and she's fine, so I'm gonna talk regularly. Because I was really, really low. My phone. Sorry, phone's not on silent, it is now. Anyway, so. She gonna sleep right through my talking, cuz that's what she's doing. Well, she trying to act like she's asleep, whatever, not the point. This is a video not about her, this video is about them. You see he's angry, all his people live, I'm in here by myself with these random roommates cuz yeah, there's new roommates. But I'm a butthole and I deleted all the beds out, so. With that being said, can't nobody sleep but him in that dorm room. But um I had to, I've already lived this life that they're living right here because. I played this already but I had to shut it down and reopen it because I didn't like what it did. So, we're gonna do it over again together. I might have to add them beds back. Dang, never it. But um that's what we're gonna do. Um add the beds back and see what happens. He's about to talk to Kwan, Amaya's mama, I mean daddy. Cuz not only did his roommates uh flunk out, but two of her roommates on probation. And one borderline probation. I ain't doing too good. All the other Sims I done had go to university. All passed, every single last one of them. Then I get into actual let's play and now I wanna flunk out, like they don't know what they doing. But luckily, these two are the only ones that has not been on probation, knock on wood. But he does have a DGPA. I have been having them study like crazy, they've been doing all their work. He knocked out that presentation, day one of the term, okay? And same for her. Cuz we ain't got time. Kwan over here angry, he coming, he on campus come see his daughter. What's going on with you and your grades? What's happening? Cuz of course, my two scientists and myologists are the ones on probation. So now her dad up here about to regulate, what is going on with his fine self, look at him. He had to get on his grown man, he had dreads, he cut them dreads off, but he ain't getting rid of that beard though. But he about to come be a regulator huh? He coming over here, ask them, where's Amaya? Even though you know where her dorm is, you moved to here. Anyway, so yeah, um I also had, what is this? I also had them two sitting in on a class, I mean, sorry, a guest lecture a few minutes ago. And they are just coming out of that guest lecture, lex, lecture, 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 whatever. I can't say. So yeah, um. Let me add them beds real quick, let me add them beds real quick. Um BB, enable rebuild mode. Did I do it? I did, okay, let's add them beds back. I'm just adding some random beds, I guess. Well, speaking of Amaya, she over there. At his dorm. Why is my daughter at your dorm? That's probably what he coming in to ask him. Why my daughter in your dorm? What's going on? Why she ain't being productive in school? Why she over there? Both of them, Lacey too. Y'all men not even in school no more. Cory flunked out, um Cade flunked out, and Justice flunked out, honey. Oh wait. This is their dorm. Why does it let me build in their dorm? I wanna build in the boys dorm. I'm not even in the boys household. I'm so confused, what's happening? I mean, I'm not even in the girls household, I'm in the boys household. Do you not know where to live? Uh-uh, uh-uh, I'm confused. Okay, maybe we gotta go home and then edit, maybe he was at they house. I don't know, but we gonna see him. I don't know what just happened, but it's okay. So, I also been noticing my mic being, is so far away. It sounds like I'm far away in the video, so I will be transitioning back to having my mic on my desk. Because, yeah, I was never this far away sounding when my mic was on my desk, so we're going back to that. So, I'd rather be louder than far away sounding, even though I could clearly just turn up the volume of my videos. But I don't want to. I want my mic on my desk. I actually kinda don't even like it over here on this little arm thingy. That I have for my mic, I don't like it anymore, I'm ready for it to go away. So yeah, I'm gonna be changing my desk around. So that we all can benefit from this. Okay, okay. Okay, so. Oh, why am I only man insufficient funds, I know you lying. What is happening? Why can I add these beds? Why did I delete them in the first place? I should've just left them in here, thinking that we wouldn't be getting those new roommates and hello, they came anyway. I don't understand why I'm saying business. Like what? Like, stop playing with me. Um, alright, well hey, if that worked, I'll take it. Two, three. Stupid, stupid head game. Whatever, whatever, okay, whatever. They ain't here, so that's all that be out of, you know? You know? Alright, let's put, oh, not in the wall, there we go. Um, can I put the walls down please? Thanks, thank you, thank you. And then put that bed back here too, I don't even know if those beds will work, honestly. I don't know, I don't know. So, at least we got the beds in there. Hey, did it go like, no, no? Ooh, piece of quiet, ooh, piece of candy, ooh, piece of candy. Where I get that from? I don't know. If you know a movie that came from, please tell me cuz I don't know. Study Spot, ooh, boom. Is there another one? Clothing Optional Stop, Good School? Okay, I would like to say Bridget Chester's The Good School. Wouldn't you agree? Uh, Fast Internet, looky, looky, there's Cookie. Okay, so we got this. The beds are back, so let's see if it did what it did last time, and they gonna do it this time cuz I don't want it to do what it did last time, I want it to do something different this time. So, that's what we gonna do. So, um. Here, could please get you some water cuz you are my last one. Here, get some water. Um, little plug, I'm addicted to Summer Walker's album. Yeah, just wanna throw that out there. Okay. Why did you go into the bathroom to drink water? Where are you going? To sit down with this random stranger that shouldn't be at your house with a broken leg? Yep, her leg is doing that broken glitch thing. Oh god, I hate when it does that. Can you like go? Like who are you? Go away. I don't wanna look at your leg like that, thank you, bye. Sick of looking at you. Alright, drinking water so we can, um. Oh, that's from sitting in on a class. Um, so we can like, I don't know. Study, yeah, let's study. Fifteen hours. Did you do all your homework? Matter of fact, I kinda wanna go to that library. Oh, oh, okay. You know what I really wanna do? I wanna go to the households that I had to send the boys back to and have them reapply. So that's what I think I'm gonna do. We're gonna go take a trip, well, I am, and then when we come back, we'll be right back in this household, okay? So I wanna go and have the boys reapply, hopefully they'll be able to come back to school. And we'll put them right back in the household and we'll start over. Yeah, because I need my boys back, so that's what we're gonna do. Okay, so, we moved Justice in with Cory and Aubrey because he doesn't have a family. Because he was a townie and I didn't make him a family, but that's not the point, so Cory was like, well bro, we have extra room, my grandma ain't go mine, she cool. Tell me what else, I gotta sneeze. Sorry, I could not pause it fast enough, bless me. Anyway, he was like, it's okay, bro, it's cool, come on. Move in with us for a while, we gonna get back in school. So that's what they about to do, they about to get back in school. Okay, so we gonna have him come on over here. Matter of fact, isn't there cheats? Is it this, Enrolling University? Boom, Bridget Chester, boom, culinary. One class, we gonna give you one class. You ain't got no other duties but one class. Boom, and we're gonna move into waiver. Boom. You know what? You know what? No, we ain't gonna cheat, we gonna get him a scholarship. We gonna try our best to get him a scholarship. Um, apply, same for you, come on, we need you to apply for some scholarships too, let's go. Cuz we don't wanna pay for nothing. Apply, come on. So that means we have to wait for scholarships to come back and all the good stuff, it's okay, I ain't complaining. So you can apply for all of these, bro. Bro, wait, what about you? You know what, I'm gonna wait on you, hold on, let's get his apply first. Um, apply. What is Aspen doing over here? She coming over here to see him? Aww. Oh no, I just applied him for the athletics one. He gonna have to join the dang home team. Dang, I forgot, I wasn't thinking. Darn. Hopefully he won't get it. I doubt it, he's gonna probably get it. I wasn't thinking. Okay, your turn, let's see. Um, apply. Cory, go let this girl in. Alrighty, thank you, thank you sir. I wonder if he'll be able to even get any, oh, he can, food and drink. And then we're gonna apply for. Winnipeg. And then we're gonna apply for. We trying to get all of the scholarships cuz we need the money, esports. You did it, I'm sorry, okay, go see your future girl. Is she coming here? She coming here? She alright, oh, she's not coming here. Can you come here? Where you going? Call her over. You know what, I don't even care. I just wanted to get them applied, so it'll be a little easier for me and quicker for me to get them all in here. Okay, and then we gonna cheat them moving in, so we gonna do that little cheat cheat thing thing, getting them moved in, we just need them to get the scholarships first. So now let's go save, let's go do the same thing for Cade cuz he gotta come back to school too. Okay, so he's back home. With his family. Unfortun, unfortunate, unfortunately, so his parents told him. Look, bro, we ain't paying for no more school, so if you wanna get back in there, you once have to apply for some scholarships. Okay, so. He gonna come in here. And apply for some scholarships. Heck, at this rate, he gonna be going to school with his sister, with his stepsister Zorri. At the rate that he going now, and she's still a high school student. Dang, I did not mean to do that for Cory, I did not want him to be on the soccer team. Whatever, whatever. Oasis Springs Residence, um she sleepy, so I'm just letting her go sleep. Okay, so he applied for his scholarship, which is good, I'm gonna head back to the school. Because it's almost time for them to get their grades and I do not wanna miss that. So let's head back to the school, I know these two little household visits probably was really not even needed to be in the video, but whatever. I had updates y'all on the fact that they got kicked out of school, so. Let's head back over to Bridget Chester and see what's gonna happen. Okay, so we back at the house and of course, there's freaking random people everywhere. I would delete all y'all, not, not playing. Matter of fact, y'all know me, y'all know I delete a sim in a heartbeat, don't play. Delete. I would delete you, I don't need you in my game, I don't want you here. I'm trying to get my boys back up in here, you're deleted, period. And once they get their scholarships, I'm coming back into this household. And I'm coming to delete whoever pops back up in here, just so I can move my boys back in, period. Period. There's no point in all y'all being up in here, I know the game about to regenerate more. But if you sneeze one more time while I'm streaming, I mean not streaming, recording, I'm going to scream. Stop it, what's wrong with you? Oh, that's her comb rubbing against my desk. I'm sorry boo, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for fussing. Um, you had a class coming up, let's go ahead and study this. Uh-uh, you're not sad, you don't need to talk to nobody. You just need to study, 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 okay? Study me a more, study me a more. Look at, let's just take a moment to appreciate this campus in the snow. Yes, scenery. Hiccups, I wish it got. I'm sorry, I disturbed my cat from her sleep. I wish the snow got a little bit more deep, but. Hiccups again, oh well. But hey, it's snow shoot. I want him to be able to get some sleep. Soon as he get his grades, we are going to. Run over, what is that? Oh, they're lights, I was like, what is that hovering in the air right there? They're um lights. Um, we're gonna run over to the girls' house and get their grades too. But I really want them to study. Okay, so let's run to the, um, ah, I'm so scared, I don't want nobody to fail anymore, you know? So let's have him go to sleep. And I don't even know if they all finished with their work over there, okay, yeah, let's run over here real quick, we gonna go back and forth to each houses right now. Y'all ready? Go. Alright, boom, she better back, she was chatting, she need to hear homework. Come on, why y'all stress me? Why y'all stress me, Amaya? She's. Alright, let's do this homework, homework, and then study. Matter of fact, I think we all going to that library, we all going to the library, we just gonna have a big hole, get your butt home, come on. We gonna have a big hole study session at the library, cuz we ain't been to the library the whole um season yet. So I'm down for that, look, this what you do, this is how you study. Oh, she's chatting. We're studying, put this away, we're going to the library after she do her homework. You ain't did your homework, so let's have you do your homework, do your homework. I need you to come home, thank you. Um, you gotta do homework? No, you don't have to do homework, Lacey. You don't have to do homework either, okay, let's knock out this homework real quick. Put your laptop back in there, everybody got their laptops? Lacey, where is your laptop? Oh my god, did she leave it at the dang old comp student union place? She probably did, I wouldn't put it past her. Oh no, she has her laptop, okay. I was like, what? Okay, so laptop, laptop, you got your laptop, laptop, you got your laptop, laptop. Okay, bet, after everybody finish homework, we're going to the library with Cannon, he's going to. Uh, Sienna, oh, yeah. You done? Alright, let's travel. We're going to the library, we're going to the library, what, 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 what? Um, let me see, roomies, no, let's not do that. Boom, 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 boom. Who am I missing? What, what, who am I missing? Nobody. Who am I missing, missing? Nobody. Okay, so I ain't missing nobody, bet. Sienna, I wanna make sure again, Sienna, Lacey, Aspen, Cannon, alright, let's go. We're going to the library right now, right now. Cannon is sleeping, Cannon is coming, trust and believe, he's coming to this library, I'm gonna summon him, yes we are. We're going to the library today, cuz we gonna get some studying done so we can get good grades. Oh, bars. That was so lame. That was lame, that was really, really, really lame. It's okay though, no judge, no judge. Okay, we are at the library, at the library. Okay. Lit, it basically looks like the student common area though, basically like. Boo, so let's get our laptops, damn, I did not mean to say the D word. I wonder if Cannon has one, I think Cannon does, let's sit here. Sit together, sit together. Well, good thing, ooh, I hope y'all don't hear my stomach growling. Cuz it is early in the morning and I wanted to do this video because I was playing Sims and why not just hit the start recording button, right? Reads? Reads, like read? No. No, where is it? Oh, right here, study. Okay. So then, now you go back in there, classwork, study, don't you study with them? Oh, aren't you the sweetest blueprint ever? He's awesome, love him. Okay, so we have to do this the hard way. So let's get your book and let's hit. Study. Okay, study. Um, and then study with. Boom, bow, boom, into. Boom, and we're studying. Sit down, Sienna. Thank you, alright, study session, a go-go. Study session part two, so speaking of study session, so um I had one of my really good friends was watching the video and she was like. Um, your video repeat itself, and I was like, oh my god, thank you. So I had to delete the whole study session video, so boom, study session two point oh, Sienna, what is wrong with your skin? No ma'am, uh-uh. Did I not start your treatment back up? You are in the treatment, so. Put that on your face. Don't you, don't you change clothes, don't you change clothes? I knew you was gonna change clothes, sit down, sit down. I'm gonna let you keep it on too, who doesn't go to the library in college in your pajamas? I know I did. I used to travel in my pajamas a lot in college, I'm just saying, we all on the same campus, we all here for the same thing, we all gotta do what we gotta do. If I gotta run out in my pajamas that look like clothes, then I'm gonna do it. Granted, she ain't got no shoes on, but it's okay, I had shoes on, we gonna act like she got shoes on today. College students, you know what's up, okay? So anyway, oh, I gotta put this poster on wall. Okay, so we're studying, it is four o'clock, let me see times. She don't even have a class. In seven hours. Okay, we just gonna study, I don't even know what she's studying. Oh, she's studying the one that she got next, I wonder if they automatically study the classes they got next, push the button. Yep, they do, they study in the class they got the closest to, so. I got her studying the wrong one. I need you to study. Study this one. Okay, so turn that off. Is it gonna do it? Okay, there we go, now she's studying the right class, and I'm assuming he's studying the right class too because everybody else did it, so. Why not, you know? Why not, you know? So four hours, Amaya's gonna go to class, I don't wanna say that. I don't wanna say they're gonna sit here for four hours, but. They probably will, they probably will, we gonna see when. Oh, she's hungry, of course you're hungry, Amaya, I mean, Sienna. Yes, studying. I'm a proud mother. Look at this studying, this is what they should've been doing in the first place. See, how many more, look, three more chairs, boom, Cory, boom, Justice, boom, Cade. I'm a horrible person, I could've had them at the library studying a long time ago and I didn't. And I made three of my boys flunk, that's okay cuz they coming back and they going to finish college, okay? We're not letting them flunk a second time. So we got that studying done, Sienna's like, okay y'all, I'm about to head out because I'm hungry. Six hours until Lacey, Aspen, six hours. And three hours for Amaya, her class is at eight. Well, about to be less than three hours, two hours cuz it's almost six o'clock in the morning and she's getting hungry too. I wonder what time, oh, the student union doesn't open till seven, so I think I'll keep them here, well no, cuz it's gonna take them time to get all the way over there. Dang, stupid student, you don't open until then, oh, we not even on campus, we at the library, oh no. We gotta go so we can make sure we get back in time, can you put your clothes back on? You're acting crazy, stop acting crazy. This, 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 boom. Boom, bow, boom, okay, let me stop, somebody saying I'm copying art, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're gonna do this and she reached the level four, I had to summon him by the way. Cuz he was quote-unquote sleeping, whatever. Study session is complete. Can we start a group? Start a gathering? Um, oh, you know what? Look at us, look, boom, take us right to you bright comments cuz that's their place to go. When they start a group gathering or whatever, so they can eat and be entertained, study all at the same time. I hope Amaya's computer did not just get left at the library. If it did, I'm gonna be so mad, so mad. I have a feeling, I have a feeling that she just left her laptop at the library. I bet, how much I wanna bet she did? How much I wanna bet? Oh, she did. Oh, there you go, the following answer returns to either your Sims inventory or the household inventory after being left on another lot. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, and look, she either gets something to eat here or somebody just got over here, so let's all go over here together and let's get us something to eat. Hurry up, um, what's your name, um, Supria? Okay, so let's get you. Are you serious? We really got to wait till seven? You lucky we going free food. Cannon. Everybody use the bathroom? No, no, well, I'm gonna have you use the bathroom anyway, use the bathroom. Oh shoot, Lacey the one that gotta use the bathroom, my bad, Lacey, I should've kept looking. Five minutes till it opens, what you doing, preparing the food? You cooking? Standing in one spot? Oh, alright. Oh, no, you gotta eat. You gotta eat first, eat really fast, eat really fast, get you some eggs and toast. Get some eggs and toast and then you can go to class. Get out of her way so she can get something to eat. You ran out of time, Supria, it don't take that long, come on, get your food. Oh my god. Thank you, now eat your food. Okay, the rest y'all can get some eat, pancakes. Eggs and toast. Alright, girl, we're good. little brushes before class oh look at my girl look at my girl Candy back to go okay so head to class alright so I guess we have to wait two minutes one go to class boom alright so she's off to class oh my god go to class thank you Amaya sit down again I was about to say I was about to be really freaking upset like what are you doing okay so why you ain't got no jacket on you gonna be sick okay so Sienna's the only one that's in the spirit corpse how do you say it put up banners on your sport arena prank arrival statue put up banners on arrival sports arena let's do that you got class today you sure don't let's get it where is the arena no not here um Lacey what about you hold on before we do that Lacey got class in three hours so I think I want I think she's okay with studying since she got that mood lit and then yeah they both got class in three hours so I'm gonna leave them right there and me and Sienna gonna head over to the stadium um let's remove the banners and then add them back because I need to oh wait where's she going oh why was I thinking she was going to class okay so she moved her banners and then put up banners where is she was that her mother I know it's not her mother good job Amaya right so let's see she's gotta take her final exam now why is Genesis here okay so she put up the banners and then they got class in two in an hour so let's see taunt arrival student put up banners on arrival okay so four days three days three days two days for those events so leave organization events our society that's what she needs to do cuz she's into arts this is Foxbury okay nevermind uh okay 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 I see oh we could see their event so we can go there and taunt them nice but we're gonna go over there anyway so we're just gonna wait for them to go to class are they going to class now yep oh god ew fix yourself fix yourself Lacey thank you that was disturbing Lacey never went to the bathroom okay so they'll be going to class here in a few um let's have um um Sienna clean up clean off our statue and then we're gonna head to Foxbury I think this gonna have to be a two-part two-part series because I don't want one long video so I think that's what we're gonna do we're gonna do a two-part series so boom pause for effect okay so we're gonna go ahead and end it here but I'm gonna start back up a whole nother video so you'll have two videos being resolved okay okay so this will be part one of the redo study session video and then something happened if you hear the ambulances outside I'm so sorry so then we'll start right back up on part two when our grades start rolling in and then we're gonna also check on the boys that got flunked out and see if they got their scholarships okay okay and I will see you guys oh make sure you follow all the social medias down below make sure you hit the subscribe button cuz we almost at a thousand make sure you hit the bell button so you can know when I upload videos and come follow us on Twitch so you can see all my Sims and me behind the scenes and interact with me and my crew and I will see you guys in the next video bye